Good morning, everyone. We're going to start the city council meeting starting now.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, July 3rd, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. Council members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon.
Alrighty, we're going to please stand for the moment of silence and then following the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of the June 19th city council meeting and bills for payment on July 5th and 12th, council members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores.
Today, we have Michelle Jagga, Executive Director of the Erie Area Council of Government, to do a presentation to council in all of our community.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Michelle Jagga. I am the Executive Director of the Erie Area Council of Government. Thank you for giving me the time to share some information about the PA Broadband Development Authority's Broadband Ready Communities Program. The intention of this program is for municipalities to review their permitting policies and procedures and in an effort to reduce barriers to ISPs as they prepare to build broadband infrastructure with the B money being deployed later this year. As a reminder, Pennsylvania has received $1.16 billion to address the un- and underserved addresses in our area. While the city of Erie is fully served, there is potential for overlap as these projects commence, and having the designation as a broadband-ready community will allow ISPs to know our community is ready to partner with them and ensure any necessary permitting processes will be efficient. Specifically, the broadband authority is seeking municipalities to review the following items: equal access to the right-of-way; the participating municipality must verify to the authority that it will ensure that the existing franchise agreements allow for access to the municipal-owned right-of-ways; permitting timelines; a municipality must verify it has taken steps to ensure timeliness associated with broadband implementation; the municipality is required to demonstrate it has committed to a specific timeline once a broadband-related permit is received; additionally, the municipality must demonstrate the reasonableness of its municipally-owned poll attachment fees and dedicated poll-attachment timeline process, as well as list any other municipal and/or county permitting as relevant to the implementation of broadband infrastructure; street-cut moratoriums, as they significantly impact the implementation of broadband infrastructure; the participating municipality must briefly address steps taken to minimize this barrier, and again, they're just looking at timelines as far as the moratoriums, not necessarily the cost to cover repairs; bonding; bonding must be proportional to the project impact versus total project cost; the municipality must indicate that it utilizes proportional bonding or briefly discuss its decision not to. The authority is asking that you make any changes which are necessary and feasible with regard to these items. The authority will analyze each municipality's response and consider applications on an individual basis. And as a reminder, the funding is not contingent on participating in this program, however, it will give our area recognition and will look favorable as we try to attract new internet service providers to our area. Once you have determined any changes to make or not with regard to permitting, the authority requires you to allow for public comment at a meeting, giving two weeks' notice of your intent to proceed with your certification. This notice can be a posting; it does not have to be in a newspaper if held during an already advertised meeting. And at that meeting, you'll identify a broadband champion, which can be somebody internal or you can utilize the COG as your champion. That person will facilitate communication between the authority and yourselves, and the broadband authority will also require that you pass a resolution at this meeting, and I provided a template for that. And as you move forward with the process, I'm happy to support you in any way possible. So I appreciate your time this morning and your consideration as you move forward with that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, after our presentation, we will move on to citizens to be heard. If we don't have any repository sales, do we have any repository sales? Do we have any repository sales? I hear none. We will move on to citizens to be heard. The media will line up on the left of the room and citizens on the right of the room, and you get five minutes. Please speak clearly your name and the municipality in which you live. Thank you.
My name is Freda Tepfer, and I live in Erie. Most of what I have to say involves my regular issues.
I'm sorry, Freda. There's one thing. Councilmember Mel Witherspoon is going to be doing a proclamation, correct? Or recognition of a young man?
Recognition. This last week, Friday, was the end of our, what we call our biddy camp. That's a basketball camp where we teach drill skills and respect. And usually, the mayor is there on Friday, but he was swearing in five policemen. And the year prior, on a Friday, he came out, we had a one-on-one between he and I, and cameras caught him dunking on me. And I invited him back this year. He got scared, so he had to swear in five policemen on the same day. That's questionable. Anyway, the most important part is, I have a young man, he kind of run the camp. He's about six years old, I believe. I would like to have Paige Collins, she's our camp director, come up, tell us a little bit of what you did in the camp, and bring the superstar with him.
Good morning, everyone. As Mr. Witherspoon said, my name is Paige Collins, and this year I had the opportunity of being a camp director. A quick overview of our camp is the basic skills of beginner basketball, such as layups, dribbling around cones, spot shooting, foul shots. We also added in agility ladder, and this year, we also added in defensive drills. I would call this kid right here, Malachi, our MVP. He's a great kid. The first day, he was so shy, he did not want to leave his mom hip, but after that second day, he was determined, and he did an outstanding job. His parents are here today. He did receive two trophies, second and third place. He also received a basketball for the hard work he has done.
Congratulations, Malachi, on your trophies. Hopefully, next year is a great year for you as well. Alrighty, thank you for visiting City Hall. Now, we will move on to citizens to be heard. Freda, you may go ahead.
I wondered why there were so many people here. So it was always nice to see our young people recognized. So as I said, most of my comments have to do with, I introduced myself already, someone could do that again, to do with access for pedestrians, but not all of them. I was at an event yesterday at Chautauqua Park, and two of the regulars were there, and we were sitting at our table having our PluA meeting, and one of them said, "Well, they did all this work here, but then they left us a gravel path to go in." And here's a guy with a walker. Why is there not a paved, it's probably about 150 feet or less, why is that gravel? That's not accessibility for people who have mobility issues. So I told him the 870-1111 number, and I told his friend to call that number, but I'm bringing it to your attention. I'm so appreciative of the ordinance around sidewalk closures, and I do see them, I do see the barricades up. Some of them have the lower bar. Without the lower bar, somebody with a mobility cane would not detect the closure until they ran right into it. Some of them seem to be, well, here's a good example. On my way here, I noticed on 8th Street between Sassafras and Peach, you have the barriers on either end, on the north side of 8th Street, you have the barriers on either side of 8th Street. Unfortunately, the one at Sassafras, Humphrey, the guide dog would walk right around that because somebody's pushed it out of the way. But you have the entire block blocked off, although people are walking it, for one sidewalk pavement-length space, hole where something's being done, the entire block. The whole point was to set up a process so there would be bypasses of things like that. I've only seen, since the ordinance passed, I've only seen the city require it once in front of the cathedral on 10th Street or alongside the cathedral. This is an underused tool that the city should require in their sidewalk closure process. That was ridiculous. This is one, you know, one like from that monitor to where, not even that far, probably this far, and they had the whole block sidewalk closed. Could be just send people into the street with a marked-off access. I don't need to go on. I think you got the point. Yesterday, on my walk, at 25th and Green Garden, there was a new crosswalk painted in the street. I'm talking to Shelley, who you know well from Humphrey, on the phone, and I said, "Well, look at that." But right up to it is grass, new grass, as a matter of fact, new grass. And there is something going on with them noting the utilities. Maybe they're going to put in a curb ramp, but they have to put sidewalk in because there's grass there. So somebody painted crosswalk, but there's no curb ramp, there's not a sidewalk up to the curb, much less a curb ramp. But it reminds me of the fact that I have been asking for months and months and months to have a crosswalk painted at 25th and Geist, at the west end of Baldwin Park, where yet again last night, the pickleball players chronically blocked the access to the park. I know there's a park improvement plan, I know there's activity, I know there's some kind of safe streets for school, but can't we just have a crosswalk painted like the one at 25th and Green Garden? That's all I'm asking at this point. Then at least people would have no excuse for blocking our access to the park. The other thing, how do I get, there's somebody at Green Garden and 23rd who's hedged, you know, low-growing hedge, they do cut the height, but it's growing over the sidewalk. It's growing like this, so you have to turn a wide corner. If there's two people walking, if somebody with a stroller, whatever, we're losing probably a tenth of the sidewalk width because somebody will not cut back their hedges. And I have reported this numerous times. I understand there's an issue with things that I report that aren't getting taken care of because the magisterial judges don't want to deal with it. Well, that's a shame. Okay, one quick thing I'm going to mention, the county provides access to the entire agenda packet, all of the items, including the full piece that you get. I think we should be able to have that access too. Take a look at the county council agenda packets as they're providing access online. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ruth Swaney, Lincoln Avenue, to address the bridge issue again, or still, or another time. I see first reading to accept the $375,000 for the Cockla Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project. Congratulations on getting the money. I'm fairly certain at some point, the bridge project is going forward as a vehicular bridge. However, you know, my position is that there should be a pedestrian-only bridge. And I'm just here to say, I do not want any more of my taxpayers' money funding any further studies on how to improve the Erie as a community, the city, how to improve it. You had a study done in 2016 in which it clearly stated that the neighborhood should be developed as pedestrian-friendly places, that funds development should not focus on automobile convenience. And this same study was brought forward in your 2021 study to say the same thing. So I don't want any more of my taxpayer money spent on studies that are ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard today? You can come up to the podium and state your name and the municipality in which you live, please.
Sheila Garhart, Top Road, Erie. Just in response to the previous woman, if they wanted to keep it a footpath bridge, they should have never torn the bridge down in the first place. They could have made it a barrier, and it would have been a footpath. And that's all I have to say. That's taxpayers' money that shouldn't have been paid to knock it down, and now that there's the money back to get it, it should be rebuilt. That was the deal, and that is what the mayor said. In fact, he told me personally on Saturday that the bridge would be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who would like to be heard?
Good morning. My name is Natalie Kohler. I live on Superior Avenue, and I also would like to address the bridge. I didn't intend to speak this morning, but I live right next door to where the bridge is. I understand trying to keep the neighborhood connected is the most important issue. This bridge was an existing bridge, which has always been vehicular as well as pedestrian. Lincoln Avenue is two blocks away from where this bridge is. It really is not affected nearly as much as the people that live on the other side of the bridge. For three years, we have been directed to and forced to go up Maryland Avenue, which is a much narrower street, busier street for the people that do live on Maryland. They are facing a lot more traffic going up and down. Maryland now is in desperate need of repaving. It's in terrible condition because of the additional traffic. Again, this was an existing bridge for over 100 years, and I would fully support and hope that it continues to be both the vehicular and pedestrian bridge that it has been in the past. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Lynette Hughes, and after the last meeting we had here about the bridge, I noticed a person who lives in the neighborhood on Safenet or on, I don't know, Twitter, whatever it is, Facebook. And she said, "You know, I think it's really unfair that people think that we live in a ritzy neighborhood, and we all have a lot of money in this area." Somebody said that to her, or she heard that, and she said, "I think it's really unfair because I like to walk my baby over the bridge and see the people on the other side." So I hope you don't get the feeling that everybody's rich over there and wants to build that bridge for, I don't know, a lot of reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard today? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard today? I'm hearing none. We will be moving on.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16443, official ordinance 31/2024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $7,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This is from the sale of a Harley-Davidson motorcycle. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Schaff. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16443, and now known as Official File Ordinance 31/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 31/2024, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16444, ordinance number 32/2024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $16,951.99 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for a Pima grant from the Office of the State Fire Commissioner to purchase eight portable suction units and 95 particulate-blocking firefighter hoods. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Member Schaff. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16444, and now known as Official File Ordinance 32/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 32/2024 by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16445, official ordinance 33/2024, an ordinance to repeal the ordinance number 8/2024, which was passed and approved by council on March 6, 2024, as it was a duplication of ordinance 58/2023, which was passed and approved by council on September 20th, 2023. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Schaff. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16445, and now known as Official File Ordinance 33/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt official file ordinance number 33/2024, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16446, official ordinance 34/2024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,971,318 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and $5,000 program income for a total of $2,976,318 for the following community development block grant projects. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16446, and now known as Official File Ordinance 34/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop. Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 34/2024, finally by yea five, nay one. Council File Number 16447, official ordinance 35/2024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $764,318.25 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the following home M24 projects. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16447, and now known as Official File Ordinance 35/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus.
No.
Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 35/2024, finally by yea five, nay one. Council File Number 16448, official ordinance 36/2024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $267,205 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the following emergency solutions grant, ESG 24 projects. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16448, and now known as Official File Ordinance 36/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 36/2024, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16449, this is an ordinance for first reading. Amending Article 381 by extending the final date under the Local Economic Revitalization Task Assistance Act, which is LURDA, ordinance to apply for property taxation relief. LURDA is one of the methods used to promote past and present economic development with the city of Erie, and this amendment will encourage continuous economic development into the future. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. The Council File Ordinance Number 16449 have been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16449 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16450, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $158,893 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the 2024 Auto Theft Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Member Schaff. The Council File Ordinance Number 16450 haven't been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16450 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16451, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $371,700 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. A contribution from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Department of Community and Economic Development for Police K-9 Unit. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Schaff. The Council File Ordinance Number 16451 have been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16451 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16452, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $375,571 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the Cockwa Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project. Bid Number 1819-24. Sponsored by Councilmember Troop, seconded by Councilmember Witherspoon. The Council File Ordinance Number 16452 have been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16452 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Madam President, this takes us to new business.
Motion, move the balance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any separations? I'm hearing and seeing none.
No separations?
Nope. Looks like everyone's content.
Moving the balance of the agenda. Members Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. This takes us to committee reports.
All righty. Councilmember Witherspoon, would you like to start? Since I know you have a lot of updates with Spoons League.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to give you a little update on the Police Department. We had 1,357 calls for service last week. No major reportable incidents took place. Five new hires were sworn in last week. One female and one officer was born in Ukraine. We are now up to 194 total. Since 2021, the Police Department brought on 56 new hires, with 17 being minorities. Recruiting diversity into the department remains one of their priorities. However, it is likely that three officers will be retiring this year. The officer who was shot while on duty is still recovering and doing pretty good. We have three officers activated by the military, and there are 10 officers in various stages of injuries on the job. Their job is a very difficult and dangerous job. Our effective manpower currently is down to 172. Hiring 18 officers with the ARP funds was a lifesaver for us. We aren't sure what we would have done without ARP money. Our community, eight people were shot, two were accidental. Madam President, Monday begins the 34th year of the city-sponsored, community-support sponsors of the Spoons Basketball League. Monday, the first day is always a hectic day. Right now, we have 213 have signed up. We have broken them down into teams. We will be issuing team jerseys on Monday. Monday is probably the most hectic day because we'll get another 25 saying they forgot to sign up. Right now, we don't have any room for the 19th Street, but we do have room for the Bayview League, and we will sign them up if they want to go there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for your update. I appreciate that. I know the community is always very adamant about your league, and I'm sure they appreciate the updates as well. Thank you. Go ahead, Tyler.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick reminder, I'm sure that a few others will hit on this as well, but that on July 17, we will be back out on the road again. Just using that opportunity to remind everybody that the City Council will be at the MLK Center. And then at the end, on August 21, we'll be at JFK. So just make sure that you're aware of where we're going to be, and come join us down there. On June 27, we had the Drug Treatment Graduation at the county. And I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate all the participants and the graduates. That's not an easy task that they accomplished. What's expected of them, and the consistency in how they have to show up. It really is, it puts a lot on that person. So to everybody who graduated, congratulations. Another shout out to the beautiful event that was hosted down at Perry Square on June 20 for World Refugee Day. That was, it was really just touching to just see how much the community came down and engaged with and really learned from the different cultures that we have present in our city. We really are a very diverse and vibrant city. And to just take even an evening to celebrate and honor that was wonderful. Reminder that, you know, the Fourth of July is happening. We've got a big event happening here in the city this evening. To please, please, please be safe, use caution. And to remember, honestly, to remember our veterans who live with the ramifications of PTSD and what fireworks sound like to them. We see a lot happens in our neighborhoods, and the people that we are celebrating are often the ones who are bearing the cost while they're trying to feel safe in their homes. So just please be cognizant of especially what our veterans are dealing with right now. And then just to take a moment to really thank those who had supported and showed up for my nonprofits fundraiser that we had on the 21st. Because of the investment from the community and the Compton's Table, we're able to offer programs like True North, which is an independent living program where we teach queer youth how to get jobs, how to live safely, you know, how to apply to school, how to find housing, how to grocery shop. And so if it wasn't just for so many community members showing up, we wouldn't be able to do things like True North. So thank you for that. And then just again, a reminder to be safe as we head into, you know, this is a big holiday weekend. Travel is expected to be very high. So just watch the neighborhoods as you're driving through. Kids are going to be very excited. There's a lot of picnics that are happening. So just be cognizant. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Titus. Councilmember Mo Troop?
Madam President, I have no report today.
No report? That is okay. Councilmember Nelson?
No report.
No report. And Councilmember Schaff, do you have a report?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to congratulate the new hires on the police force. And I want to remind people that we live in America and we have so many freedoms. So enjoy the day tomorrow. You don't have to, I love summertime. You don't have to be wealthy to enjoy all that Erie has to offer. Make use of all the recreational activities that we have available. And use your block. Visit with your neighbors, get to know them. When I first moved into my neighborhood in the 80s, we had picnics together. We went over to each other's houses during the day and rested in the backyard while the kids played. And there's always someone that has a pool in the neighborhood. It's, you know, try to mix and mingle and enjoy everything. Use the parks, enjoy the parks, just relax. As a teacher, when I was teaching, I loved summer times, but it wasn't a completely downtime. It was just re-energizing for the upcoming school year. Use everything that's out there. There's so many free days that are available to the community. And if you have money to spend, go visit the zoo. Go to the Children's Museum. Go ascending the climbing mountain. Go to festivals and enjoy everything that Erie has to offer because we really do have a lot to offer in our community. Like Tyler Titus mentioned, we're so diverse. There's so many people and so many stories to listen to. Just enjoy being alive and rest and relax and be safe. We need to stop at those stop signs. We need to slow down to a stop at the yellow. I was talking to a gentleman yesterday down at Dobbins Landing for my walk, and he said even the comedians who come into Erie mention that we're such a fast-moving city that we don't necessarily follow those lights. We need to stop at the yellow, stop at the red. We need to do that. And if you have a property that has grass, please maintain it because there are some situations where we have rodents and things that are not good for our neighbors. So if you have a property, please take care of it. When I first got married and we had a place, we didn't have a lawnmower except for one of those old-fashioned ones with the wheels and the blades move around, you know. Do that. Get a scythe, try that way. Just to be mindful that we don't want critters running around. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Councilmember Schaff, for your report. I will go next. So kind of late last week because I was sick, but I did attend the Women Leadership Event that was held at the Crime Victims Center on the 29th of June. It was really nice to be in spaces of women who are leading the way in making change in our community, business owners and people who are starting new developments in our community. It's impressive to see what we're able to do when we network together. The next thing I would like to mention is that I did attend a few Sea Wolves games last week when they were in town, the 25th, the 26th, and the 29th. It was great sunny weather despite the rain that was on and off throughout those days. I wanted to mention the upcoming study sessions that we're going to be having on July 9 at About an Update with Wayne Health and Wealth Equity Development Plan. So they're going to come to Chambers, and they're going to update Council. And then on July 16, we're going to have an ARP update study session as well. Those study sessions are open to the public, and they are at 5:30 here in Chambers. As Councilmember Tyler Titus had mentioned, we are going to be continuing our summer tour. So our next council meeting that is in the evening hours on July 17 will be at MLK's Center. And that meeting will be starting at 6:30. And I also just wanted to acknowledge community members in our community who suffer from PTSD and our veterans. We think that the fireworks are a great experience for all, but animals and vets definitely do not enjoy this time of year. As a partner with someone who suffers with PTSD, he is traumatized every time someone sets off an unexpected firecracker. And in some neighborhoods, it's a constant once the warm weather starts. So just be conscientious of those members who do suffer in silence. They did a great service to us, so let's just be very wary of that. I also wanted to mention to the community, we have a lot of great public spaces. Let's appreciate them. We have public parks, we have our peninsula. We need to leave things better than what we find them. And I find that a lot of people do litter and they leave their trash behind. And if we continue to allow this, it pollutes our lake. You know, we are a freshwater lake. We need to be conscientious of the fact that whatever we don't take care of will have a ripple effect later. So I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, if we're in our parks and we see trash, let's do our part. I tend to pick up trash when I'm on walks just because it drives me insane. And I see a lot of young people who don't understand the concept of no littering. And I think that we just as a community have to do better because if we don't take care of Mother Earth and the one well, and that is something we need to be very aware of. So, you know, we need to take care of all spaces that we, as humans, touch. And that is all I have to report. And I will be moving on to Teresa. Do you have a report? No. Does the Solicitor's Office have a report? None? Renee, does the mayor and the administration have a report?
Yep, I'll try to be quick. I want to publicly thank the MPO for providing the additional $375,000 so that we can move forward with construction of the Cockwa Bridge Replacement Project. That was extremely helpful. Also, wanted to make residents aware that the city recently was notified that we'll be receiving a Department of Energy grant to conduct 350 energy efficiency audits on homes within the urban core in our most disadvantaged communities. We'll be getting out a lot of information, doing outreach and engagement in July and August. And then those audits will start and probably continue September through May. The plan is that once we have the audits completed, then we will apply for implementation funding to be able to make those improvements on those homes. So we're diligently working on that. We also received four proposals from consultants to facilitate the Parks and Rec Plan. We reviewed those proposals last week and are moving forward as quickly as possible so we can hopefully begin that planning process this month or in August. There will be a lot of opportunities for community input into park and public space priorities as well as recreation opportunities. And then as Councilperson Titus mentioned, tonight is Lights Over Lake Erie. As usual, the fireworks will be set off at 10:00 p.m. at Dobbins Landing. We highly recommend that people park south of the Bayfront Parkway and walk down. Thanks to the Erie Parking Authority, there will be free parking in the garages on West 7th and Peach, West 8th and Peach, and East 8th and French Streets. You can view specific details on the city's website at lightsoverlakeeri.com. And then in addition, this Sunday starts the first in a six series of the 814 concerts. July 7, Sunday, will be at Bayview Park at West 2nd and Cherry Streets, starting at 5:00 p.m. with the Ruby Port Band. And then the Sounds of Summer starts Monday, and that is going to actually be in Perry Square, starting at 7:00 p.m. with Tennessee Back Porch. And let's see. I think that's all I have for today. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. I believe that concludes our meeting.
Madam President, I'm sorry.
Oh, repository, oh yeah, I forgot. We forgot a repository sale, so we're going to do that. What would you like to comment really quickly?
As a COG delegate, I forgot to thank Michelle for coming today and presenting. Thank you very much for putting out the information that is necessary. Thank you for spending your time with us today. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. We'll move on to the repository just so we can wrap up really quickly. I don't want to, yep, you can come up to the podium. I just don't want you to have to come back to a later meeting, and we missed you when you first.
Good morning, everybody.
So what is
So what is the address in which you are, what's the property in which you're?
The property is twenty-four oh six Downing Avenue.
Okay. And what is the property, is it vacant or doesn't have?
Yes, ma'am. It's just a lot. It's grass there. Says it has all public utilities. My plan is in hopes of grabbing like a mobile home, putting it on there, putting on foundation, retiring the title. I want to brick it up all around, give it an extended roof with the deck, and that way it could become real real estate. I don't know how it works, I would have to check with the zoning officer and all that good stuff.
I don't believe mobile homes are allowed in the city, so you're not, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't aware, this is my first rodeo, I'm sorry for the lack of knowledge.
Yeah, anything that you're going to want to do with the property, you're going to have to go through the zoning and the permitting, but I just want you to be aware that they do not allow mobile homes in the city.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I have another, I have a question. So would I still be able to bid on it even if I don't have plans for the property right now, I could just revise my plans?
As long as you agree to maintain it, and you're responsible at making sure it's nice and clean and landscaped, you can bid on it.
Yes, ma'am, I have all the proper equipment to do so.
All right. Does anyone on council have additional questions? Go for it, if you do.
The only questions I had were, sorry, were very similar to the ones that you had just asked, just I hate to see someone have plans laid out and then the zoning not permit what you're doing. I think that there are other ways to kind of build what you're hoping to do, but just make sure that you're touching in with the zoning laws so that you just don't.
Yes, sir.
Get off kilter there. But I love to see, you know, someone coming in from the community to take over one of these lots, so thank you.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
Thank you. The zoning may change and coming down through the years and that, so we know that housing is needed and necessary, and, you know, they are nice homes, so they may change sometime, and, you know, that would be very nice to do.
Absolutely, thank you.
All righty, I don't have any other questions, I just, you know, advise, please always make sure that you check with the zoning, because we don't want anything that you start to be undone after you've put money into it.
Makes sense.
Yep, all righty.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All righty, I believe that concludes our City Council meeting. Oh, there's one more gentleman. What's, are you here for a repository sale as well? All righty, please come forward. All righty, please state your name for the record and the address in which you are trying to purchase.
Name for the record, Jalen Van. And the property that I am looking for, I believe it was two four, I'm pulling up the information, no, I'm sorry, I said I had this pre-ready.
Two forty-seven eighth thirty-second.
Yes, ma'am, that is the property that I am bidding on. Pretty much I have a proactive plan to keep the property up and running. I do plan to build on the property, of course, go to zoning, get the zoning information from a zoning officer, and get, pull permits for the property. I have different, pretty much a bank that's willing to pretty much finance me for the building of the property. I'm looking to pretty much possibly see if I can do a duplex on that property to make sure, one, is bringing in enough money to where it would suffice for me to live in one of the units, of course, and in another person next door. I spoke to the next-door neighbor, they were nice and gracious enough to give me information about that property. They were the people to pretty much have that property torn down, thankfully, and I wanted to buy the property so I could have it rebuilt better.
So the neighbors had the property knocked down, and you want to purchase the land to then be able to hopefully develop a duplex?
Exactly.
All righty. All righty, and I know no one lives there because it's just vacant, you said you were going to contact the zoning. Does anyone else on council have any issues with this going to a city resident? Nope, we prefer the land stay in the city, so the fact that city residents are starting to slowly purchase some of these vacant lots, even if right at this moment we can't build, we're working towards it, so we love to see it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, this concludes the City Council meeting.
All righty, Mo.